Good evening. I am going to call to order the October 21st, 2024 School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open-meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open-meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harper Media recording tonight. Thank you so much. And we are recording on Zoom for purposes of the minutes. Is anybody in the audience or online recording? And I can say "audience" because we have a full audience tonight. This is wonderful. I'm so excited. Not seeing any. Okay, so we will move to Item 2, Approval of the Minutes, and we have two sets of minutes to approve. Somebody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee meeting held on October 5th, 2024.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee meeting held on October 7th, 2024.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Okay, thank you. Okay, so Item 3 is Questions and Comments. Ness, no, I will have to read it, but yeah, come on up. Okay, so speakers are identi-- speakers are asked to identify themselves. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the School Committee and that are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guest wishes to speak, please raise your hand, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to the topics within the scope of responsibility of the School Committee. As established by Mass General Laws, the responsibilities of the School Committee are to: One, select and evaluate the superintendent; Two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and Three, establish educational goals and policies for the school district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the School Committee. The School Committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. In addition to this public comment period, the School Committee practice is to provide time for questions and comments from the public on new business items.
Hi, Jacqueline Boprey, President of the Hingham Education Association. I just wanted to bring to your attention on the ballot on November 5th, question number two is the question whether or not we should remove the graduation requirement from the MCAS. And I understand that a lot of you are prohibited from taking a stance and discussing this publicly due to your own employer or your spouse's employer's policies, but I'm hoping that you are willing to use, those of you that can, your own platforms and you're willing to discuss with your community members what you think about this as experts about how this will impact Hingham public students, and I hope you would support a yes vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment or a question? Not seeing any. We will move to Item 4, Superintendent's Report, and I'll pass it over to Katie.
Great, thank you, Ness. This evening, we're thrilled to welcome two of our high school students, Christopher Hoppy and Anthony Cicerone, who were recently awarded the National Merit Semi-Finalist Distinction. And I'd like to invite Principal Bucky up to the microphone this evening to present Christopher and Anthony with their certificate.
Program. I'm just going to read a little blurb that they provide and then honor these two outstanding students. We have so many excellent programs at Hingham High School, but I think the caliber of our academic program is really the lead in the programs that we have, and these two young people have taken advantage of that to be named semi-finalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. So, over 1.3 million juniors in about 21,000 high schools entered the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the preliminary SAT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, PSAT-NMSQT test, which serves as an initial screen for program entrance. The nationwide pool of semi-finalists, representing less than 1% of U.S. high school seniors, includes the highest-scoring entrance in each state. And so, we have Anthony Cicerone and Christopher Hoppy. And in addition to their academic achievement, I thought it would be interesting for the committee to see just how dynamic these two young men are, so I asked their school counselor just to provide a little blurb, and I'm going to share that with you, present them their certificates, and then let them get home to do their homework. So, Anthony Cicerone. Anthony Cicerone genuinely enjoys learning. He wants to do-- he wants-- involved. Tony is collaborative in his approach to both-- his work both in and outside the classroom setting. Tony is trilingual and brings a different perspective to his academic and social interactions. When Tony is not solving puzzles of sorts, he can be found spending time with family and friends, enjoying the outdoors tinkering with the latest electronic device, or spending time creating a new recipe. Tony is considering several fields of study, including but not limited to law, economics, and engineering. Tony, come up and get your certificate. Christopher Hoppy. Chris has had a number of achievements over the past three-plus years. He has maintained high-level academic performance while also participating in a number of different activities. His GPA is a solid 4.2 and was earned taking all Advanced and Advanced Placement courses. He is captain of the varsity sailing team, excelling in band, concert band, wind ensemble, and jazz band, Quiz Bowl, and the chess club. He was named National Honor Society Scholar and won a competitive race to become the treasurer. Chris has also won academic awards, including the AMC and the National Latin Exam. Christopher Hoppy. Thank you.
Thank you, Detective Bucky, and again, congratulations to Tony and to Christopher. Very proud of both of you.
Yeah, congratulations. Amazing.
Congratulations. Great. Well, continuing with our superintendent's report, I did hear a highlight of my weekend, and that was attending the Hingham Arts Club, and we had several Hingham students on display this weekend. The concert band, so Christopher, you were there for that, and wind ensemble joined forces to present a really terrific production of Into the Clouds, and we had a number of family members there, so that was a terrific networking event. We also were able to celebrate our drama students, who gave a terrific preview of their upcoming musical, Hadestown, which will air on November 21st to 23rd, so those tickets will be coming out soon. The play is described as a jazz-infused interpretation of the Greek myth Orpheus and Euripides, so that will be a really interesting take, and again, the students did a terrific job this weekend. Also, wanted to preview another coming attraction. So, Hingham this year, the town manager, Tom Mayo, has spearheaded a new initiative called the Local Governance Academy, and so, Hingham residents were able to register for this opportunity, and so, Hingham Public Schools will be one of the eight town government bodies that will be presenting. And so, on Tuesday, November 12th, we'll have a presentation with, including one or more School Committee members. The School Department will be providing an overview of our budgeting process, our programs, and we'll also do a sneak peek of our jazz band ensemble, who will give a little performance for the participants. So, looking forward to that opportunity to meet more community members. And then finally, I just wanted to give a shout-out to our PTOs. Over the course of the month of October, when you look at the school calendars, it is just packed with enrichment activities, with community celebrations, fall festivals--
And I'm so incredibly amazed at all of your accomplishments. I am just, you know, bowled over, so congratulations again. Okay, we're going to move over to Item 5. And John, thank you. I appreciate your efforts. I know you have to wake up super early in the morning. I am grateful to your work. Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so Item 5, 5.1 is Communications Received by the Superintendent. Katie, did you have-- okay. 5.2, Student Communications. Slater or Tony?
Students were static in their victory over Whitman-Hanson Panthers, furthering their goal-- in the football game at last homecoming, and furthering their goal to reaching the Patriot League title. The following Homecoming Day Fair was bustling with students and clubs, and it was really awesome to see that. And for a personal thing, Heather Charles was yesterday, and Hingham High Crew had a-- an interesting race. It was fun, and we were excited to see Dr. Bucky and other members of the community out there.
Thank you. All right, 5.3, Other Communications. Does anybody on the committee have anything? Nope. Okay, all right. So, Item 6 is Unfinished Business. We started talking about policies at our last meeting, so this is our second read, and I will pass it over to Ellie Anderson, who's the Chair of Policy.
Thank you. We'll start with Policy IKFD, which is diplomas. And this one, we did have some discussion about last week, so I just wanted to go back to that and see if anyone had any additional thoughts. The changes included just clarifying that the diplomas are actually signed by the Chair of the School Committee, and then we had the discussion about the presentation being by the School Committee Chair or their designee on behalf of the committee, and there were some thoughts about that. I did look at some other school districts and their policies, and many of them actually do have the same language that we're proposing here with the diplomas being presented by the Chair of the School Committee or their designee. So, just, you know, for a point of comparison, doesn't mean that we need to do it that way, but I did want to go back and see. I know Michelle had some concerns about putting that pressure on the School Committee Chair to make that decision, so if we want to change that language or proceed.
Yeah, I looked at the policies. I was surprised that not many districts have an actual diploma policy.
Yeah, there were surprisingly few.
Yeah.
I think a lot of them wing it. I think the only-- can I?
Yeah.
I think the only thing that I was thinking about, I do-- I don't know, the designee part worries me a little bit. And then, like, what, do we have a public discussion of it? Do we just give the Chair the ability to do it? Because I think, Matt, that was your point. So, I guess I was just thinking that because the principal and the superintendent and the School Committee Chair signed them, so I, I don't know, after the last graduation, I just thought, why do we not just let the principal do-- deliver the diplomas, and then the School Committee Chair and the superintendent are part of the receiving line? But that's, anyway, that was my only thought. If we were going to make a change, do we just have it be the principal to do it?
I don't know. The-- I think the reason we have this, just from what I understood coming on, was that the diplomas are from the committee, because it's-- they're not graduating necessarily just from Hingham High School, but from the entire school system. You think from preschool, some of them, you know? So, that was kind of the thought behind it. I mean, I don't know. I like the language as proposed, and we could do something like the School Committee or the Committee's designee if people are really worried about it, but again, to your point of the public discussion, like, I don't know if we want to do that.
And we did originally, and part of the reason we, you know, were looking at this policy is because last year with Rick, it felt like that was an opportune moment for this type of situation, but that was the discussion, too. The principal is the one who's with these, you know, students every day and knows them better than we do, so it felt like that was more comfortable. However, the School Committee Chair is the one who's signing them, so we did have some back and forth on, you know, what was the right language and was this the way to do it so that the principal could have that opportunity and get into them.
What if we also, if we went with this language, if we said we review it annually? Because we actually just did say that with the-- when we added in the language for the staff, we were said we were going to kind of review it here and here and there to see how it went, see if there were-- because I remember at the time, there was a little, was it going to be confusing? Was it-- how was it going to go? What if we also said that with this one, saying that just kind of see how it goes with this language, if there's anything down the line, if the Chair feels that they're getting requests and having to choose and know that it be at their own discretion?
Yeah, because I think the goal was more to allow for the principal to have that opportunity as appropriate, not to be fielding requests from the community about other people.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, but there could be a, I don't know-- There could be a situation, yeah. So, we didn't want to-- because it--
But hold on, I'm confused now. So, are we saying that we will be making it the principal? Because I'm perfectly fine with that.
Not necessarily, but that was, you know, kind of the thought behind it, that then we have the option to, to give that opportunity to the principal each year.
I feel like the only thing with any language that will review it from time to time is, I feel like we always reserve the right to do that, so I feel like if we call it on in one policy, if we don't call it on others, then does it-- that's the only thing--
And it kind of obligates us to do it, too.
Right, yes, that's true.
If it's going fine and we don't need to look at it again, then we could be as specific as presented by the Chair of the School Committee or the principal at their discretion and just keep it to those two options, but then that doesn't leave it open in a situation where maybe there is someone that we feel should have the honor.
Right. What do most-- what do most districts do?
I have to research that. I'm not sure if it's principal or School Committee.
You know, when I was looking up the policies, I was trying to kind of answer that for myself, but it was only like a handful of, like, five or six that had a policy on it, so I was just trying to think back of other-- I haven't been to many other graduations in other towns, so--
I looked it up a long-- like, five or six years ago, maybe six years ago, just to see anecdotally, like, and it's all over the place. Some people do the School Committee, although it didn't seem like that many, like, if the policy-- but it was like, some principals, sometimes the student, like, the student, like, the class president does it, sometimes the faculty advisors do it. It was like all over the place. Like, sometimes the kids get to vote on who's going to do it. It was like everywhere. I was like, oh, that's all. Ooh, there's like myriad of choices.
The language here seems closest to what has been the standard practice in Hingham. It seems like this might be a "if it isn't broke, don't fix it" situation.
Well, I think it was broken last year. That was the only issue. Not broken, but it was that we had to-- we did make a change, yeah.
Right.
But that went fine. I mean, we didn't change the policy, and we did that, and it was fine.
It was, I mean, and I know I got to do, hand out the diplomas the year before, so I'm aware of that, that I had that honor, but being able to give to the principal where the kids actually know who that person is, they have no idea who the Chair of the School Committee is, and I know we are doing a lot of great work and we sign it, and I think that's a great honor, but it-- I think it means more coming from the principal.
Yeah, I agree. I would be fine if we just kept it as, if we wrote it as the principal, but I don't know.
It's, I mean, that was, but last year was kind of a unique situation where the principal was leaving and his kids were in the class, and like, that was like a special thing, I think, and I thought it was great that we were able to do that, but I don't know. I think the language in here allows us to do that if something like that comes up again, but--
I think, I felt the same way. Like, I think I totally understand what you're saying, but I think it's just when you're handing them out, you don't, you don't really have a connection with most of the kids. So, for them, I guess I would at least say, and if the Chair is going to hand out the diplomas, they should at least go to the graduation rehearsals, because 80% of the kids that come up don't know they're supposed to come to the Chair, because they weren't there at the rehearsal, and they're like, what is this person? Who's this person standing here handing me a piece of paper? So, that's the only thing that I think, is that there isn't-- and I still think you get the piece of it, because you're there, like, all three people who signed it are there to congratulate them and get their photo op done, but I think for so many of them, like, exactly, the principals seem to have more of a connection to most of the students than than we do, unfortunately, but--
How much--
Can I put the students on the spot? Yeah. Can I ask you guys your thoughts?
I could add something.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, like, I mean, I definitely understand both points, and obviously, like, Slater and I and the rest of the, you know, SAC, we work very closely with you guys, but I think, like, the average HHS student might not, you know, know you guys too well, and even though Dr. Bucky has been here for just this year, I think, I think what you guys were saying, that we really, we really, we kind of have kind of established a relationship with Dr. Bucky, that, you know, even though we have established one with you guys, I don't think the majority of HHS will have by graduation. So, again, I understand both sides of the argument here. I just, that's what I would say, speaking for the majority of the students, what do you think, Slater?
I think most students are just happy to get that piece.
I'll shake anyone's hand.
We might be overthinking this.
Well, leaving us is, well, is changing it.
Right.
We want to change it.
So, I think the question is, do we want to change it to, you know, having the diploma presented by the Chair of the School Committee or their designee, or change it to presented by the principal? Or--
Or their designee.
Or their designee.
Matt, do you still--
I think it's fine as is. Honestly, I think-- sorry. I think the updated policy with the, or their designee, is fine.
And you're, because I think it was you who raised the point about, are we just allowing the Chair to decide?
Oh, yeah. I, I'm, I'm fine with that, or their designee. I think I'm fine. I mean, as much as I don't trust NASA. Yeah, I guess I don't. I did raise it, but hearing this, I think, I'm fine with this.
And I guess if the Chair went rogue, they would hear for the rest of the time. Then the policy chair will be changing this back.
I mean, the person who's elected as the Chair doesn't, they usually have support behind them to become the Chair in the first place, unless just like, yeah, not it this year.
Okay, so-- Okay, all right. So, it sounds like the change proposed is what we're going to go with. Okay.
Did I make a question or did you want to? I can do it. I make a motion to approve Policy IKFD, diplomas, with the suggested changes. I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Okay, all right.
Now, we have the really fun part. We have seven policies that all have the same changes, so these you've seen before, and the only change to these is in the protected class language upfront, which has just been revised to match the language from the Title IX policies.
Anybody have questions? No, no.
So, I can go through and make motions of these.
Sure, yeah.
I have to do them all individually, huh?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to accept the revisions to Policy JBB, Educational Equity.
I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Sorry, I confused you. I went out of order. It's not intentional. They just all get jumped on. I will make a motion to accept the revisions to Policy JB, Equal Educational Opportunities.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
I will make a motion to accept the revisions to Policy JFBV, School Choice.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
I will make a motion to accept the revisions to Policy JIKK, Harassment of Students.
Second. All those, I mean, sorry, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I will make a motion to accept the revisions to Policy GBA, Equal Employment Opportunity.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I will make a motion to GCF, or to make a motion to accept the revisions to Policy GCF, Professional Staff Hiring.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
And I will make a motion to accept the revisions to Policy IJ, Instructional Materials.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right.
And that is it for me.
Thank you. Well, until we get to the MASDC stuff. Sorry. Okay, so, Item 7 is New Business. 7.1, To Discuss a Trip for the Hingham High School Students to Peru in April of 2026, in Act As Appropriate. Oh, great. Welcome Laura Mulherby.
Hi, everyone. My name's Laura Mulherby, and I'm a Spanish teacher at the high school. I am here to just tell you a little bit about our trip. I'd like to give advance notice for families to plan for April 2026 to Peru. It would be a nine-day trip, coming in just under $4,000, and we would be visiting over five distinct regions of Peru and doing all of the historical and cultural things, from weaving to visiting and hiking Machu Picchu to, I know I have to get ceramics class in there as well, visiting a monastery, museums, salt ponds, and fortresses, and more. I am very pleased to say that the tour company I've been using for 12 years now, this would be my eighth or ninth trip using EF Tours, and they have come in with a $300 discount, which is much different from their $100 discount that they usually do, which I was very pleased to, to share with you, like, that just came in. So, what you might have seen in front of you is different today. And I don't know if you have any questions for me, but that is why I'm here. And would it be appropriate for me to share with you about a new travel scholarship, too, that I, initiative that I've been working on? Yeah, so we, with administration's help at the high school level, we have been, we have created now, recently, a new travel scholarship fund separate from the GCP program, Global Citizenship Program, which already has their own travel scholarship that they offer for their program specifically. This would be for any student at the high school from 9 through 12 with financial, known financial hardships to have access to this. This would be, we're hoping to, to get solicit donations soon so that even the drama club can use this for their April trip. This is not just trips run by me, but any high school trip that students, domestic or international, that they might need help funding. So, please keep a lookout for ways that you and the community could continuously support our wonderful programs that you have in the past. Thank you so much for offering these opportunities with us. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions?
That would just look like an amazing trip.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, my brother was dating a woman from Peru, and the food's amazing, so yeah, should bring home stuff every Christmas. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Laura.
I will make a motion to approve the Hingham High School Student Trip to Peru in April, for the dates of April 17th to 25th, 2026.
I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, 7.2, Received an Update on the 2024 Student Assessment Data.
Since Tim's favorite night of the year. So, I'd like to welcome our, also our Curriculum Director team this evening, David Jewitt, Director of MAP, Mary Andrews, Director of ELE, and Michelle Romano, Director of Science, and I'd like to welcome Erica Pollard, who will be giving her first-ever MCAS presentation this evening. And so, this evening, Erica will, of course, give a high-level overview of our MCAS data and how we did, and I'd say just a spoiler alert, it does-- --on our MTSS at middle school and high school, and hope to see similar gains as we continue with the MTSS initiative. Wanted to share that tonight's report will look a little bit different in terms of format. So, previously, when we shared data and graphs on MCAS, we were pulling from a DESI portal. This evening's data and graphs will be from a new portal that we have called Open Architects, and this report here is not for you to take a dive into. It's just to give you a sample and a flavor of some of the interactive capabilities that this portal has, and it has allowed us to much more easily sort data, sort into subgroups. Some of the work we actually used to have to do manually, we can do it the click of a button. So, again, new format this evening, open to feedback. format this evening, open to feedback, um, on, uh, the new format. Uh, and just wanted to share that the data that we present to you, we're looking at high-level trends and so on, but wanted to give you a sense of the kind of data that we have at our of the kind of data that we would look at with our departments as we're looking to make adjustments to curriculum and instruction. Erica, though, will be presenting tonight more of the longitudinal data. So how are we doing, um, over time? How have we done pre-COVID and post-COVID, um, as we're, um, continuing to, um, uh, come out of, um, the pandemic? And she also is going to share tonight, uh, one of the features of this new Open Architect, um, platform is it allows us to more easily, uh, do a comparison to our comparable districts. And just a reminder, um, benchmark districts are the districts that we use for financial comparisons. Uh, comparable districts are those districts that DESI has identified as our kind of academic peers. And so we did include that data this evening, uh, because we now have it, um, easily at our fingertips. So again, thank you to Dave, um, Mary and Michelle for helping to pull these slides together and for all of their work with their departments and doing a deeper analysis. And thank you to Erica for quickly becoming an expert on all things MCAS, so.
I have definitely learned a lot about the MCAS in the last couple of weeks. Um, but again, thank you to Mary, Dave and Michelle because I could not have pulled all of this information together for you without their help.
Oh, can I also mention one unsung hero as well? Andy Hoy recently joined the MCAS party. So, um, social studies, social studies, um, eighth grade now does have, um, a civics pilot that was conducted last year. Because it was a pilot, we don't have a full data set, but did, um, we'll share a one-slide snapshot, um, just so Andy doesn't feel left out. I do want to acknowledge his work and, uh, one slide on the presentation this evening, so.
Yes. So tonight we're going to take a look at our ELA MCAS data. We've got grades three through eight and then our 10th grade competency determination for graduation. Math, we've got that same grade span, three through eight, with a 10th grade competency determination. For science, technology and engineering, we'll be looking at the grades five, eight, and the high school competency determination, which can be taken in either ninth or 10th grade. And that civics pilot, which we now have data on for the first time. Okay, it worked like one time.
There's something that happens when we start Zoom and it just doesn't click anymore.
Yeah, it's only like a thousand slides. Oh, oh, there we go. All right. Today we're going to start with ELA. Um, this first slide shows you the longitudinal view of how we have done over the last couple of years on our ELA MCAS. This is a composite of grades three through eight, all of those scores together. And you can see that from 2021 to the present, all of these scores are pretty consistent. Um, kids have consistently, um, been, for the most part, in that meeting or exceeding category. You can see that we've got a few more kids in our exceeding category this year, which is very nice to see. But overall, we've got a lot of consistency in getting kids to succeed on this exam. Now, there's really, I want to point out a lot to celebrate here in our grades three through eight composite scores. I really like this comparison to selected districts tool because it shows us that we are number one out of our comparable districts this year and number two out of all 354 districts in Massachusetts, uh, when it comes to our grades three through eight MCAS scores. That's really something that our teachers and our reading specialists and our interventionalists and our students and families should be really proud of.
And our school committee for supporting MTSS.
And our school committee. Because a lot of this does show, as Katie mentioned before, the impact of the investments that have been made in the MTSS system over the last couple of years. Open Architects also allows us to pull out this analysis of our students who are high needs and our students with disabilities. Um, on this slide, we have our grades three through eight high-need students. You can see that they're 44% meeting or exceeding, um, which is obviously lower than the number of our whole student group that are meeting or exceeding. But I would like to point out that we are one of our comparable districts in terms of how our students with high needs are doing on this exam. Doesn't mean that there's not room for growth, but want to shout out that there is some really good work happening here. Um, the same is true of our students with disabilities in grades three through eight. We have 35% meeting or exceeding. Again, that's first out of our selected comparable districts and six out of all the districts in Massachusetts. So the overall trends that we're seeing from this data, we've got 75% of students in grades three through eight who are meeting or exceeding the standard for their grade level. That's the highest percentage of comparable districts and second in the state. Our high-need students, again, we have 44% of them meeting or exceeding, which is the highest of our comparable districts. Out of the districts statewide. I can't read what it says at the bottom because of Zoom. Thank you. So our next steps on this is we're going to continue, uh, refining our integration of our inter-reading program that we adopted and rolled out last year. Continued focus on MTSS, particularly on subgroup achievement. And we're going to be it says something.
That's, uh, mutilating our new HMS PLC term.
Thank you so much.
So again, we've had, um, a significant investment at the elementary level, but kind of drawing that up, um, through the middle school, uh, with additional, um, time devoted to data analysis and, um, taking a look at MTSS interventions.
And I have heard from the administrators at the middle school that these PLCs are off to a great start. They're already looking at some of this data and really talking about the way that it will impact students. So I'm hopeful that we'll see the same kind of growth there that we've seen at the elementary level.
Just get a one sentence summary of what a PLC is. I don't think people know that necessarily.
Good point. A PLC is a professional learning community with the goal of, so it's a group of teachers commonly who teach the same group of students who will look at instructional data and plan interventions for a particular group of kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. I forget, you know, we're not all teachers. Oh, did it just go like 14 times? Okay, perfect. This is the next one. Um, so now we're going to look at each individual grade level. I don't want to spend too much time on these because I do want to keep to Ness's record of keeping the quickest meetings going. Um, but our third-grade students, you can see that we have 72% of our students, uh, who are meeting or exceeding standards. In fourth grade, that same number is 68%. In fifth grade, we've got 80%. Way to go, fifth grade. Again, first compared to our comparable districts. Sixth grade, we have 81%. Seventh grade, 70%. And eighth grade, 78%. So we've got some really, um, nice progress being made here by our students. And again, if we look at this longitudinally from year to year, there is an increase, you can see, um, in the number of students not meeting expectations, um, as we move on, sorry, to our 10th grade MCAS exam. And there's a couple of reasons for that, but one that we'll talk about in a moment is the cutoff scores for that competency determination have changed this year. So that is a big contributor to that little jump we see in the red. So before the class of 2026, which is everybody who took the 10th grade MCAS exam before last spring, the competency determination was for students to earn a score of 472 or higher, or to earn a score between 455 and 471 and fulfill the requirements of an educational proficiency plan. Moving forward for the class of 2026, the benchmark for passing the ELA MCAS is 15 points higher. They have to earn a score of either 486 or higher, or earn a score between 470 and 485 and fulfill the requirements of an educational proficiency plan. Now, there are changes in both the math and the science competency determinations as well, but they're, they're much smaller. This 15-point increase in the competency determination was pretty significant. Um, so that means that for grade 10 ELA, there'll be seven students retaking the exam in November, um, who did not meet this competence, competency determination cutoff, and 10 students who will be moving forward with an educational proficiency plan. Now, when we look again at our 10th grade students, we'll look first at all students and then at students with disabilities and students, um, with high needs. Um, our 10th grade students are 86% meeting or exceeding expectations, second out of our selected districts. Students with disabilities are 38%. And I do want to point out just for reference that the, so the column over there in the red that says 24%, that represents eight students. And in terms of our high-need students, again, that cohort of students who are designated as high-needs, who have not met, uh, expectations, that's also eight students. So what are our takeaways here on eighth grade? Again, 87% of students in grade 10 are meeting or exceeding expectations. 45% of our high-need students, which is 10th of comparable districts and 103rd of districts statewide. Uh, 38% of our students with disabilities are meeting or exceeding expectations. And then it's interesting on these last three bullets to look at the cohort of students, um, that took this exam last spring. So the current grade 10 student, all students cohort was 80% meeting or exceeding when they were in fifth grade, which was pre-COVID in 2019. That went down post-COVID to 74% meeting or exceeding post-COVID. And now we're up to 87% in the 10th grade last spring. So we're able to see a nice rebound from the COVID years. Similarly, the students with disability cohort has shown significant improvement post-COVID as well. That particular cohort was 29% meeting or exceeding in fifth grade, down to only 26% in eighth grade, and then up to 37% last spring. Finally, our high-needs cohort was 39% meeting or exceeding in fifth grade. Post-COVID, they were down to 32% and up to 46% last spring. So our next steps with this group are to continue our focus on subgroup achievement that I think is always going to be a goal for most school districts, and to continue to partner with special educators to analyze the small group instruction and curriculum that they are experiencing. Any questions about English before I move on to math? Or do we want to wait for questions at the end?
Probably better to take them one at a time. Anyone have questions? Okay. Oh, go ahead, yeah.
Just going back to the, I just want to make sure I understand the charts correctly. Um, so student with disabilities, so it's a couple slides back. When we say, in 2024, we're saying 5% exceed expectations. Like, I just don't get the, how is that possible with eight students? Because I would assume with, with eight, I would assume it would either be 0% if nobody did. If one did, it would have to be more than 5%. So am I just not thinking about it correctly? Or is it possible? It's, I realize there's a million data points in here, so it's possible that something could be off.
I'm deferring all questions about English to Mary.
Fine.
Sure. I think what, what the eight refers to are the eight students in the red. So that's 24%. There were 30 students with disabilities who took the test.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That's helpful. For the, for the students who are in the red, uh, how many, in Hingham, sort of tradition, I don't know if you can speak to, how many of those students eventually pass the re-tests? And how many of those students are, get a certificate of attendance rather than a high school diploma?
Um, this.
I know you don't have the actual data on that. I'm just sort of.
I kind of do.
Oh, okay. I didn't mean that as a gotcha.
No, we never had students retake the test, um, never passed first time. So, uh, we have had, um, an occasional student, I shouldn't say never, um, we've never had to have retakes. Um, and this, so I started in 2017 and then ladies before me too, I think. Um, that's been true for, uh, a long time. Um, but, um, we have had one ELA student and one other student over the past, um, since 2017. Um, but they, they did not meet with a high enough score that they didn't have, they just needed an EPP. And one of them passed high enough that he didn't even need an EPP. So that's what's, that competency determination scale is like a sliding scale against the rainbow colors. And that's what's bumped up. Um, so that is why if this same competency determination that, um, was in effect not only for the past few years, the next-gen MCAS didn't start in grade 10 until 2019. So those were the parameters, those old parameters, um, that had been in place for the duration because then we had COVID in 2020, obviously didn't have the test. And then they kept with those lower, um, competency determination benchmarks for 21 and 22. And then, um, for the last two years too. So this has been the first bump. So, um, it had been in the past that you could have been in the red, which we have one student one year, one another, and they didn't have to take, retake the test because it was high enough. If this same group were judged by the same competency determination that had been in place throughout, we would have one student retaking the test in seven weeks.
And I, so while we haven't had students typically tend to retake the test in English, we have had students retake MCAS in other subjects. And it's, um, I, I don't know, Michelle or Dave, if you want to talk a little bit about what that looks like, but additional support is provided to those students to get them across the finish line. I don't know if you want to say anything about that now, or?
If you don't mind, if you don't mind coming up to the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Make sure that once we have it recorded, everybody can hear you.
Happily. Um, so I think for math, I mean, we've had one to three-ish kids over the last five years. Before that, we really didn't have any. There were sort of that same situation. So up to this point, every student that has proceeded down that path of the retakes has passed eventually at some point in time. Um, there have been some students that have taken it for five times. I think five times has been the most to get a student there. And it takes a lot of work, but they, if the students really dig in and work hard, a lot of times, you know, a lot of times to this point, we've been able to do that.
Same thing for science. Uh, we have had students that need to retake, but since I've been here for the last three years, I haven't had any student, um, that hasn't passed and has not received a diploma. Science also had the competency determination changed. We were at a 467. We now went up to a 470. In years past, we've only had three to four students who needed to retake. This year, we have a significant, um, more that need to. If our competency determination was at the same benchmark, we would have only had five students that needed to retake instead of the larger 15 that's now this year. So big difference, but we've never had a student not graduate due to MCAS, at least since I've been here.
Since it's supposed to be recorded, I mean, my data goes back, I think, 22 years on that. It's not like five years.
The investment that the town made and the multi-tier support, it's huge. But back to, we always want to look at the subgroups because we've been doing that forever. And I, I noticed looking at the grade 10 students with disabilities, where in the other categories, they might be first of our 11 peer districts or, you know, high up with the, with the towns across Massachusetts. For students with disabilities in 10th grade, we're a lot lower with our comparative, comparative districts and across the state. Um, I'm wondering as far as the next steps go, are, is there any thought into looking at, say, what Groton Dunstall is doing, what Medfield's doing, what Wellesley is doing, some of these districts that are doing better than we are, um, to see, um, how we can kind of close that gap a little more?
Yeah, I thought that that was really interesting, given that our younger students are doing so well. are doing so well against our comparable districts, even our students with disabilities. I think that the MTSS system has not been as fully articulated at the secondary level. There's still a little bit of work to be done there. But I also think that talking to other communities is a great way to move forward, learn what they're doing.
As we know, MTSS, it's staffing, it's schedules, it's structures. And so we need to look at all of those things. The high school schedule is a bit of a tougher nut to crack, but something that we do need to do. And also, again, looking at partnering with special education as well to do a deeper dive into that data.
Great. Thank you.
Maybe this should wait till the end. Philosophically, so I agree with Carrie's point that you don't want to see a disparity, you don't want to see a disparity. But philosophically, like, I guess, I don't, do we want to be number one in everything for MCAS? Because I, you know, I, I'm sure it goes, you know, it takes time out of, you know, we want everyone to pass and want, definitely want that. But I guess I could also see the negative of, you know, striving for number one everywhere at the expense of other types of learning. And I don't know how much time our office department is specific in terms of how much time we would say we are spending on kind of like MCAS-specific things versus what we would teach anyways that actually is on the MCAS. So I know you're newly in need to enroll, and I, I don't know that I've ever heard that articulated as a district.
I think that's a great question, and I'll just put on my former science director hat to answer that question, if that's okay, Michelle. I would say the science MCAS scores are one where we see that play out, and that we recently adopted at the middle school this very rich inquiry-based curriculum that was one that Desi strongly recommended and really encouraged districts, provided a lot of grant funding for this Open SciEd initiative and so on. However, this new, rich curriculum does not directly align to the MCAS. And so there's a disconnect there. And so I do think, in addition to always looking at curriculum and instruction and so on, there is a point where you do need to take a look at, there are on occasions disconnects between the type of instruction that we're trying to do and the actual MCAS exam. And so it is one data point that we certainly will look at and always strive to do better on. But there are points at which you need to weigh it as one factor of many. And I would say that, as you've heard our MTSS presentations for elementary, MCAS, to be honest, as a teacher, is the least useful data point because it's not used to help the students that are taking the exam. It's used to help us evaluate our curriculum and instruction longitudinally over time. The most valuable data is our own MTSS data. And we've seen that over and over again as we are presenting that elementary MTSS data. That's actionable data that helps individual students. And so, you know, to be honest, in our new middle school professional learning communities, we will certainly look at MCAS at the beginning of the year, but we put that to the side. And we'll be looking at things like unit tests, looking at common essays and things like that. And so again, it's our own internal data, and really building up our data practices and how we're using that internal data is how we'll help our own students. So I do appreciate the question. And again, I think when we, particularly when we talk about Michelle's, some of her data for grade eight this year, we made a deliberate choice to do this, you know, new, rich, inquiry-based program. Stand behind that decision, but there's a disconnect with the MCAS exam. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I think that's a really good point, Matt, about how, you know, we don't want to be philosophically, we don't want to be all about the MCAS, for sure. I guess my point with some of this is that if it looks like there's one subgroup that's being, the disconnect is greater, like significantly greater, then I do think that's something we should look at, too.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Great questions. Thank you. You know, this is one out of many, many data points that we can work with and one indicator of success. We know that our students are succeeding in lots of different ways. Katie talked about the arts walk and seeing our kids, you know, play and act and play sports and all the wonderful things that they're good at. This is one piece. So let's look at math. This again shows us the longitudinal view of our grades three through eight students in mathematics from 2021 through this most recent year. Again, you can see that these scores are pretty consistent over time. We don't see a lot of significant changes in the aggregate during this time period. And in this slide, we can see again, there's that grade three through eight percentage of students meeting and exceeding expectations. Once again, in this group, we've done really well against our comparable districts, and we have 72% of our students meeting or exceeding expectations. For our high-needs students in that same cohort, three through eight, we have 46% meeting or exceeding, putting us third out of our comparable districts. And for our, my apologies, that was high-needs. This one is students with disabilities. We have 41% of students meeting or exceeding, which is first out of our selected comparable So our big takeaway is here, we have, again, a high number of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations in grades three through eight. Our high-needs students are third against our comparable districts and 24th against districts statewide with 44% meeting or exceeding. And 41% of students with disabilities, which is the highest of our comparable districts and sixth in districts statewide. So at the grade, at grades three through eight, we're going to continue our focus on these subgroup gaps, particularly at the middle school level, where we're able to analyze those new grade-level professional learning communities. And at the elementary level, we'll be looking this year at new math curriculum, and that'll be, you know, looking at MCAS data will be part of that process as well. So just to give you a quick view, snapshot of each grade level, grade three has 75% meeting or exceeding. Grade four, 79%. Grade five, 77%. When we get to grade six, it's 69%. Grade seven, 66%. And at grade eight, again, 67% of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations on this exam. Next, we're going to look at that 10th grade, which is our competency determination for graduation. As I mentioned, we did have a change in the competency determination for math as well, same as with English. So that contributes to why we have more students in that red category not meeting expectation. We also have, I'd like to note, more students who are exceeding expectations in this, in this past testing year. So in grade 10, our students who are meeting or exceeding expectations are at 75%. Our students with disabilities, again, for this group, I wanted to point out the number of students that we're talking about who are not meeting expectations. We've got six students in that case. And six students in our high-needs category with 39% meeting or exceeding expectations. So in sum, we have 75% of our Hingham Public Schools students in grade 10 who are meeting or exceeding. In grade 10, our high-needs students, that's 39%. And 41% of our students with disabilities. So again, you'll notice a theme here. We've got a continued focus on subgroup achievement. We're going to work on continuing to close those gaps through our partnering with special education to analyze small-group and CLC instruction as we move forward. Before I move on to science, do we have any math questions? These will go more quickly, because there's not as much data for science and social studies.
Everything we said about English, I think, which you already said. So I think that's, the lack of questions isn't from lack of interest.
Because the questions are applicable to all of the subjects. Yes.
Matt, do you have a question?
Middle, so the, as much, I just said, you know, let's not pay too much attention to where we compare, but I'll pay too much attention to where we compare. In middle school, you know, we look in math like we're middle of the pack versus towards the top. I mean, is that, and look, I'm trying to quickly go through this. Looks kind of consistent over the last five years, so it doesn't look like it's a one-year blip. Is that, I don't know, anything we would say why that might be?
I'll let Dave answer you. And I'll trip over this thing.
I guess left's only sixth grade, it's really more seventh, eighth.
Yeah, and I think, I think one of the main contributing factors to that is the fact that we level to the extent that we do, kind of thinking about those exit outcomes and see new year, and how many students are actually taking calculus. And the only way to do that, almost to, when you asked your other question earlier, I was thinking about the social-emotional piece of all of this, too. When you said, are we worried about being number one? A lot of times, many of our kids, that part of it, like, how hard do you want to drive a kid for an MCAS score? You don't. You want students learning in a comfortable spot. So with that, our leveling at seventh and eighth grade, we have, at this point, probably two-thirds of the grade that are accelerating. So if you think that two-thirds of your seventh-grade students are learning all of the seventh-grade curriculum in half the year, think of how good they would be on that curriculum if they spent their full year on just that, right? Their scores would, but most of those kids would be bored to tears, right? And they would be sort of getting pushed in the direction they want to. So I think that is probably one of the most direct impacts on why that whole sort of group jumps up. I would say one other little thing, since I have the mic. I know that eighth-grade special ed scores have been something that we've been targeting for a long time, and it's not up here, but we were seventh in the state last year, and I'm very proud of the work that the teachers put in to do that. We did a lot of different things programmatically. We collapsed two levels to do that, applied a new curriculum, and the teachers worked their tails off to really try and improve that. And so that was something that I just kind of wanted to highlight, because I'm very proud of it. Other questions since we're here?
All right. Let's talk about science. So our first slide here shows our longitudinal data. So the science MCAS is a little bit different from the other ones in that they're cumulative. So grade five science MCAS tests content from grades three, four, and five. We also know that these exams, so the grade five and the grade eight science MCAS are changing, and there'll be a statewide field test of that new exam in the spring of 2025. But we're not sure yet if it's going to be a full day of testing that is sort of no consequence for students, or if it's going to be pilot questions that are embedded in the MCAS that they take that counts for them. For our fifth grade, we have 83% of students meeting or exceeding, first of our comparable For our students with disabilities, that number is 46%. And for our high-needs students, 57%. But again, we're performing pretty favorably against those selected districts. As we mentioned a minute ago, some of what we're going to see in eighth grade is going to be a little bit different because of that new curriculum that we've adopted in the last couple of years. But for our fifth grade, numbers are looking pretty good. We're going to continue to focus on grade five MCAS review in field science classes and focus on those upcoming changes to the MCAS once we know what they are. Again, in grade eight, our longitudinal data is pretty similar. We do have more students meeting this year, which is nice. And in grade eight, we know that our students have had this opportunity to really dig into this inquiry-based curriculum with Open SciEd, which maybe doesn't align as perfectly with the MCAS as we might hope, but is providing students with a really great educational experience. We have 64% of our students meeting or exceeding. For our students with disabilities, that's 29%. And for our high-needs students, that's 33%. So as we continue with implementation of the Open SciEd curriculum, we're going to be focusing on, well, I hate to say we're going to focus on how to get kids to do better on the MCAS, because we know that through this curriculum, they really are learning a lot. But we're going to look at the overlap. We're going to look at places where we can use Open SciEd to better prepare students for MCAS. And again, we'll be focusing on the upcoming changes once we know what they are. And then in 10th grade, this is our longitudinal data. We don't have as much of it for science as we do for our other subjects, because 2022 was the first year of the next-generation biology test, so that's why there's only data going back to 2022. We have that competency determination change that we talked about earlier. And to complicate things a little bit further, we have changed our instructional model so that all students took biology, all ninth-grade students, am I correct?
Took your ninth grade and 10th grade, and a select group of 10th grade students.
Because we phased out the integrated science class that some students took in ninth grade before taking biology. So we had way more students taking this test than we have in previous years. As it stands right now, we have 15 students who will need to retake this exam. But if that competency determination had been the same as last year, it would have only been six. So this is sort of a compiled data of both ninth and 10th graders, all of the students in either grade who took the bio MCAS last year. 71% meeting or exceeding. For our high-needs students, again, that's eight students in total that we have who are not meeting expectations. 34% of students are meeting or exceeding. And seven students not meeting expectations in our students with disabilities group. That's 26% meeting or exceeding. We are going to continue our focus on identifying students who may need additional support before taking the biology MCAS in June, and focus on developing comprehensive and cohesive biology MCAS review that can be implemented for all students. Again, with the change in our instructional model last year to have all of our students take biology, we're continuing to take steps to find out how to best support all of those learners in success on the MCAS in ninth grade. This one is the quickest of all, unless you have questions about science. I have only one slide on civics. It is interesting to me, though, you can look at the released questions from this field test last spring on the Desi website. I recommend that you check them out, give yourself a little test, see how you do on eighth-grade civics. The test had two parts. Once was, one was a performance task that included some document analysis and sort of synthesis, the kind of thing that. Good news is that we exceeded the state on all of them except for one, and that one, we tied the state. So our students did really well, and I think we should be really proud of our social studies educators for preparing our students so well to do well on this exam. I know they've done a lot of work on the civics curriculum over the last couple of years, and clearly it's paying off.
I would just like to interject, though, and say that eighth graders now have eight days of MCAS.
So much MCAS.
After having a parent, being parents of eighth graders.
Yeah, it's, it was a lot.
And then they also take a language, but they do prep. It's not an MCAS test, but it's.
They're also prepping for a language test.
Yep.
Around the same time. It was, it was a lot, and I wish.
It is a lot of testing.
I wish the science and the civics could be different grades.
I remember Matt talked about this before, but why did the level of the competency change? Why did the state change that level?
Did they not feel as if we had enough stress on these?
That competency levels were the original levels that they were going to put in. They needed to show that they were continually pushing students to be harder and harder. So a lot of those were in place to be mandated, or to be rolled in over time, and then COVID interrupted a little bit of that. So they're going now for their, they need to continue to push their high standards as well. So that.
Short answer.
Deep sigh.
All right. So on a lighter topic, I want to give a quick introduction to our MTSS. All right, so on a lighter topic, I want to give a quick introduction to our MTSS beginning of year data. I know that you are all familiar with what MTSS is and how it works, so I will not bore you with the details. We're going to look at results from Acadiance, which is our reading assessment that we use for grades K through three, and then our I Ready results from beginning of year testing, that's grades three through five in ELA, and grades K through six in math. And as you all know, we use this data to inform our instruction and the interventions that students need. Tier one is the instruction that everybody gets. Tier two are those small group targeted interventions that are based on the data that we get from these beginning of year screenings. And our tier three are the most intensive and individualized intervention for the students who are at the highest risk of not meeting standards. Over the last couple of weeks, I've had the opportunity to sit in on some PLCs and to observe some of the MTSS instruction that's happening in action, and was really, really impressed by the work that our directors and reading and math specialists and interventionists have done to really pinpoint with a very high level of accuracy exactly what intervention kids need and provide support to them. It really seems like it's running like a well-oiled machine. So our focus areas for our MTSS work this year are continuing to strengthen our interventions and data protocols to further develop and articulate MTSS at the secondary level. As I mentioned first, we, earlier, we've done a lot of work at the elementary level and want to expand some of those good practices into the secondary schools. We're in year two of our adoption of into reading and are updating pacing guides based on what we learned from last year, and will be undergoing some curriculum review for a new K through five math program. In the math world, there will be continued elementary math coaching cycles. I got to see some of this in action at a PLC meeting last week where a math specialist was coaching teachers on how to attack a particular topic that was difficult for their students, and seemed like she was really able to provide great support to the teachers so that they'll be able to better support their students. And of course, we're going to continue to work to align social studies and science initiatives with our into reading scope and sequence so that we can get the most integrated results for our students. So, beginning of year, MTSS reading. These are the, the tests that we use to screen students. We've got our first sound fluency, phoneme segmentation fluency, nonsense word fluency, and our oral reading fluency, and all of that comes out in really detailed information that teachers get to work with in order to help students succeed. So this first example is from kindergarten. We can see that seventy-seven percent of our students are above benchmark, sorry, are well above benchmark. Nope, just above benchmark. That's the right term?
So green and blue, so actually either.
In the green and the blue. I was, well, yes. Most of them are doing really well. In the green or the blue, above benchmark or at benchmark, we have a relatively small percentage, seventy-seven percent who are below benchmark, and an even smaller percentage of four percent of students who are well below benchmark. And in this case, anybody who is in the yellow or the red is going to be getting interventions to support their progress. We see similar results in grade one. We've got the majority of our students at or above benchmark. In grade two as well, we have the majority of students either at or above benchmark. And then for grades three through five, we get similar data from I Ready, but the significance of those colors is just a little bit different. Our students who score in that yellow zone at the beginning of the year, we know that they're ready to access this year's curriculum. So we're not worried about yellow, they're actually in a really good place. Our students in the green zone are meeting some of the beginning of the year objectives for their grade level, so that is also a great place to be. And for our students who are in red, those scores are going to give their teachers and specialists and interventionists, interventionists, really key information to help students be successful. So you can see here that they get a breakdown of how each student did on each of these subtests, and that again allows for that really pinpointed instruction that I was talking about a minute ago. Similarly, in grade four, we've got most of our students in green and yellow, which is where we hope they'll be. And again, in grade five, mostly in the green and the yellow, which is great. For math. Here we can see the
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
That pyramid does not correlate to the HTSS or MTSS. It's different. Okay.
Obviously, the students in red at the top would be receiving services, but yeah, it's not, not as
Okay, but they might be receiving services at tier two, like the interventionist, okay.
Correct. It's not necessarily segmented in the same way. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So for math, we can see that our students in yellow here, ready to go, ready for grade level curriculum, students in green are meeting some of the beginning of year benchmarks already, and for our students in red, those are the students who are going to get the most one-to-one time with teachers and interventionists and the most, the highest level of intervention. We can see that for grade one, the vast majority of our students are ready to go, ready to learn there in the yellow. In grade two, again, we have most of our students in the green and the yellow with just twelve percent at risk for tier three. It doesn't mean they're in tier three, they're just at risk. We want to intervene before they get there. Grade three, again, mostly in the green and the yellow. Similarly, in grade four. And also in grade five. And as you can see, student strengths are going to vary across these subtests, so by looking at this individual student data, teachers are going to know what students need and be able to provide it for them.
So in a good explanation, should yellow be they're ready to learn skills that they have not yet been taught?
Yes.
Okay.
And to that point, seeing the amount of green that we have, MTSS also serves the function of addressing students who are ready for more. So given that we have so many students who have already mastered many of the grade level standards, part of MTSS is thinking about how we further challenge them with more challenging reading or math materials, so.
Yeah, that was one thing that was interesting, looking at tier two, is its enrichment, too. It's not just
Yes.
Kids who are ready to, so it's, so, can you go back to slide seventy-four? It's the initial placement BOI, I Ready Math Diagnostic. I just thought it was really interesting, if you look at the green, thinking of the history of MTSS, how much green has happened over the past four years, and like, and how much less red over the time, too? So I think that's right there.
The fact that we're starting there, right.
Yeah. It means that our kids are starting in a really strong place and ready to handle what's put in front of them.
Yeah, that's great.
And that is all that I have for you tonight.
That was, you know, so short. I am so grateful for your work.
It was two presentations for the price of one, so.
Yes, we wanted to put it all together, and thank you again to Dave and Mary and Michelle, and to Andy for bringing together all this data, because it's a lot.
You would never know that you had to get up to speed. You seem well versed, and, yes.
And thank you to all the teachers who are putting all of this into practice.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Boots on the ground.
Which is why she really didn't have to get up to speed.
Any questions before we move on? All right, thank you very much, and thank you all very much for all the work that you are doing. Incredible. Okay, so seven point three, to discuss MASs and MASc resolutions and act as appropriate. So we have the MASs and MASc conference that's coming up. Carrie is, has graciously offered to be our delegate, and we voted on that during our planning session, so I had assigned a resolution to each of our school committee members to just kind of take us quickly through the resolution and to vote on them. So I have Tim for resolution one and two, if you don't mind taking us quickly through.
I just thought the MCAS talk would be over.
One more.
So I'm going to try really hard to stick to the resolution. I clearly, you know, there's, there's a lot there in MCAS in the news lately, as we were in Jacqueline earlier, and what, you know, sort of sticking to what we're voting on. This is a resolution that was last, first presented last year, was tabled until this year, maybe a moot point by, when it's actually heard on November eighth. But it is basically focusing on issues of equity between school districts in ways that may not speak directly to Hingham, but sort of speak to the larger role of MCAS of the state. So it's basically saying that we need a, to develop a wider, more consensus-based strategy to test students, that we look, want to look at an evaluation of the current MCAS test in terms of equity, in terms of how really districts are treated across the state, and that we are supporting a moratorium on MCAS testing effective immediately, and urges Massachusetts to develop an alternative to the high-stakes MCAS test. So it is arguing that, to urge to take away the MCAS, but replace it with a more equitable test. It is not, it's not a resolution to eliminate testing. How that's done leaves a lot of questions, but that's what the resolution states.
And there might have been a reason why I gave the teacher the specific resolution.
My tongue is bleeding.
All right, so does anybody have any questions?
I just want to say, because we did discuss this last year, too, and just personally, I would support everything on there except for the immediate moratorium, and I think that's where, I think that might be what we related last year, I can't remember, just because I don't like taking it away without something to replace it. But I agree with everything else about, you know, studying it and getting a group together to, you know, all the stakeholders to make sure that there's something more appropriate put into place, and the equity audit, too.
And, and something that, you know, to talk about Katie was talking about earlier that really helps the students and focuses, you know, narrows down on skills for the students, it's sort of an ongoing discussion about, you know, our MTSS system doesn't end in eighth grade, and how do we sort of continue that on, and is MCAS a tool to continue that on with? It isn't right now, really. Yeah.
We voted last year to take no action on it.
Oh, that was the official, oh, okay, good.
And Erica's point, too, about there's more to the students' academic performance than just this one test, right? And having this be so high stakes and have so much pressure on the kids for this is, yeah.
I agree. I don't love the MCAS. I don't love that it takes away the, the ability for the teachers to teach the way that they want to teach their teaching to an exam, and it's unfortunate where it's gone. But I like data, too. So I want to make sure that students are getting what they need, so there's, that's just something to assess and
You know, especially across this, like, all the different districts across the state, and just making sure there's a district that needs resources, like, that's, it is a data point, it's not everything, but, yeah.
Yeah, I'm worried about them increasing that, like, what's going to happen to the other districts that are struggling already
Right, yeah.
To graduate some of their students.
Yeah.
I know, I actually could, cannot even wrap my head around that they want it to get harder. Like, why are the kids just innately born smarter than the ones?
And especially now.
I'm like, I don't even understand that. What do you mean, why do you want something to get harder, right?
Especially now, too.
Yeah, right.
Exactly, yeah.
So what do we think?
So what are our options? Sorry, I remembered, I just forgot. It sounds like last year we voted no action. We collectively voted no action, we committed our vote to support
We're all in favor of voting no action.
I think if I could just say one more point, just, I think the one thing to keep in mind, and I don't disagree with Carrie, there are people wanting data, I look at the quality of the data that we're getting from it, and seeing are we, what, is this data, given all of the equity issues that are stated in the proposal, is this good data that we're getting? And that's a question. I don't, I'm not attempting to answer that.
And I just struggle with a clear answer, because I, same with Carrie, agree with all of it, but I don't like the idea of just taking it away immediately and not having an answer in place for what would it be substituted, because we may think that's better or worse, or it's hard to know until we know what that is.
So is that the difference from this year from last year? Is that they are giving, they are
I think it's exactly the same.
They are claiming that they do something?
No, it's the same, I think, that
It's exactly the same.
So you ask them for us to potentially support it, but remove that? Like, if you go, when you go as our delegate, you'd say?
Well, that's, that's where, where I personally would
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
I would support it without the moratorium.
Yeah. Is there room for nuance in the discussion?
Yeah, it's probably going to be amended, I guess, if, if, because there's like a big discussion, it's like town meeting on steroids.
I think we'd be good with having it, you know, something in place before they take it away, and
There would be makeup.
Yeah.
So we want to vote in favor of it minus the
Moratorium.
Moratorium.
So there are four points to it. Develop a more wider consensus-based strategy with more meaningful input from legitimate stakeholders, that we want, one, evaluation of the current MCAS system, moratorium on the MCAS, and develop an alternative. So the third point would be the moratorium on the MCAS effective immediately. So if we can support one, two, and four of it, I don't, I don't think it's broken down quite that way.
Yeah, so our options are, we can either vote to support this, as it's written, vote against supporting, so we would vote no, it's a thing, or we could vote for, I guess it would be an amendment.
Or take no action.
Or take no action, yeah.
Or vote to, I heard Carrie, that she sees that as an expensive order.
So the fourth one, I, I'm honestly not sure where I stand, because I can, overall, like, I can definitely see an argument for, like, frankly, for completely, and I can see an argument to keep it versus some unknown alternative. I mean, the fourth is saying, if we, if we support that, that we're urging to develop an alternative. Like, the first two are sort of like, let's, let's, let's have a, let's investigate if there can be a better system, or a test. I guess I have a hard time before doing that. Why would we say yes before, where the alternative is not, that is worse.
Maybe the option is supporting the first two and no action on the second two?
Now, again, part of me could be talked into sort of voting for eliminating MCAS altogether, sort of supporting all of this. That's my own personal opinion.
What happens if we vote no action? Does that mean that the person on the floor gets to decide?
No, no, I just wouldn't vote on it.
Okay.
Is it something, a statement if we don't vote on it? I wonder how that plays out.
No. I mean, it's not No one will know. Yeah.
Yeah, that's true, with the voice vote.
And there's a potential, this will, this will be a moot issue before, by the time we hear it on the floor, depending on the
No, or
The ballot is just the graduation requirement.
Okay. Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Yeah.
Clearly, I have a tenth grader.
I mean, I hate to take no action, because I think we all have opinions on MCAS in general.
It seems like, it seems like we have broad consensus on the first two points. I'm, maybe I'm reading the room wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, to Matt's point, that he brings up a very good point on if we were to take on the fourth one, it could be worse.
I think that's fair, I mean, I worry, yeah, until we know what it is, it's
And they're just sort of urging to develop an alternative, I'm not sure that really could
Yeah, it's not, it's not binding, it's just like, yeah.
I guess I don't feel strongly, I just
Can I propose we empower Carrie to support the first two points and take no action on the second two points? Seems like kind of where we're landing, and I think that's fine.
Okay, it works.
Maybe. Your point was, sort of, you, and I think I agree with you, sort of strongly disagree with, like, no action on the third point would mean it were sort of
No, it would be voting no on the third point.
Okay. So we're not voting to take, so the, the two that we would say no action on are urges Massachusetts to enact a moratorium on MCAS testing effective immediately and develop an alternative.
Oh, no action.
That's no action is, we are not supporting her tonight.
I think I would, I would, I would say moratorium on MCAS completely, but I don't know if that's where, I think that's what I heard you say, you would be fine with getting rid of it.
Where are you seeing these four points?
I think this may be where we distinguish between our views and what the committee wants to do.
Yeah, right.
Therefore be resolved.
Therefore be resolved.
Yeah. Like, one, it's got to be, one, two, three, four.
I don't think I'm being particularly coy about how I'm going to vote on statewide election, but
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so.
Do we need a vote on those, or just, okay?
Yeah, we do. So what's our consensus?
Can I?
We're making a motion to
Is it for the
For
The first, okay.
Two.
All right. I'll make a motion to support resolution one, bullet points one and two, as proposed by MIC Board Director. by MIC Board Directors, related to the development of an alternative to the high-stakes MCAS test, and no action on bullet point three and four.
To vote no, well, we'd be voting no probably, right?
And to vote.
Or we could do no action. But the thing is, it's going to be put forward as the whole thing. So what I was going to do is email Glenn Kuchar and just say, this is where the committee landed on this, and see if he wants to make it an amendment, or if they know how to handle that. But the idea is we're not supporting bullets three and four, right?
Okay. So back to the original motion.
Yeah.
Ending it at supporting bullet points one and two.
Yep.
Okay. I have a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And then you have Resolution Two.
Resolution Two is increased compulsory attendance age. So basically saying that students will be expected to be attending school up until their 18th birthday, or until they graduate high school, if they graduate before their 18th birthday. This is what it doesn't say, which it's sort of what it sounds like it says, is not a percentage of attendance, it's not, you know, there is the push towards greater attendance. This is really just sort of stopping kids who are 60 years old from being able to drop out of high school without their parents' permission. It really doesn't won't have much of an effect on Hingham with their 98% graduation rate, but it will have a much larger effect at especially with more urban districts who have a much higher dropout rate.
What's your experience in summer?
I love this. It would it would have a profound effect on where I teach, but that's, you know, that's a totally different hat that I'm wearing. So I don't necessarily want to bring that too much here.
But you're right, though. It was put forward by an urban district, and I watched the MASC resolution, like, where they kind of broke this all down. I guess New Hampshire has this already, and they had on their their group that kind of put this together, there was somebody who was an urban district who loved this and somebody who hated it. And the one negative thing they brought up was that it could trigger wraparound services. So if you have somebody who's, you know, leaving school to take care of a family member or their parent themselves, and we they would have to, it would have some other unintended consequences, and there'd be funding attached to that, too. So that was just brought up, and that was interesting.
A lot of urban districts have truant officers who work with the schools, who will go knock on doors if kids aren't coming to school. With this, right now, we really cannot send truant officers to 17-year-olds' homes. So.
Okay. I want it. Yeah. Ready for motion?
So I'd support it.
Ready? Yeah. All right. I will make a motion to support Resolution Two, increase compulsory attendance age, as proposed by MIC Board Directors, related to increasing compulsory age, which I just said.
I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, so Resolution Three.
That's me. This is a resolution relative to the safe storage of firearms and communicating to parents and guardians the critical importance of securing firearms. It is not adding new curriculum. It is not something for the schools to teach. It is simply a way for that is directing school districts and superintendents and staff to send communications to parents and guardians, highlighting legal requirements for firearm storage in Massachusetts, and underscoring the need for families to comply with those laws to prevent unauthorized access. And there's some good data in the resolution and research about how effective just simply reminding families what the laws are and how important appropriate firearm storage can be can really reduce accidental shootings, nonaccidental shootings, and firearm suicides by children. So again, this is aligned with other programs in other states, so this is really just directing the superintendent to send out communication to families about the requirements in Massachusetts.
We voted on this one last year, too.
What did we vote last year?
Yes.
Yes.
And I would, you know, strongly support voting yes, again, just given what we've seen around the country, and that's something as opposed to sending out information committed to this.
People can have complicated views on gun control and still support this. It's just information.
Jeff Lowry, President of the Association, is the guidance that our superintendent would be sending out, is that coming from someone else, and they are a conduit, or do they have to draft this themselves? Because there were some complicated laws.
That's a good question. Yeah, that was, I talked about that, too. And no, MASC is not planning to come up with a draft. Each district would be on their own. Framingham, which is the district that put that forward, does have a communication that, because they've been doing this, but but, yeah, it would be, because somebody raised the point, well, they'd feel better if the attorney general was setting it out, and we were just kind of forwarding it on, but that, no, that's not the plan of it.
I would imagine that since the second bullet point, second resolution is working with local law enforcement, that they would have a large hand in.
Yeah. It says to encourage, it encourages collaboration between schools and local law enforcement, and health agencies, and the community organizations.
How does the superintendent feel about having?
Follow-up question.
I absolutely support the sentiment of this, and I do think that my peers would be a good source of guidance on it, and so I would feel comfortable. But thank you for that question. That was.
Do you want? I don't know. The only thing I'm, so this is a requirement to, that you would have to send the entire wide that's going on?
No. It's a recommendation that they sent in.
Yeah. So MASC would recommend to us that we direct CP to, there's there are lots of, we could decide not to.
I'm all in support of.
Actually, it just encourages it.
All in support of safe storage of firearms, but does sending even information out about firearms give people, you know, who might right now not be thinking about owning a firearm, like, oh, okay, like, I'm not being flipped, like, oh, wow, okay, maybe I should actually purchase something that, and now that I, you know, can figure out how to save store. I realize, I realize that these cases probably aren't going to happen that much, but.
I mean, it could.
So I just.
It could, but I think the flip side, that the reminder for safe storage probably does has more benefits.
Higher likelihood of happening.
Yeah, than the few people that may decide to vote.
Oh, I never thought of that.
Who would have to then go get a license and go through the whole process to own a gun, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. All right. I will make a motion to support Resolution Three, as proposed by MIC Board Directors, related to, I haven't got the title there. Safe storage of firearms.
I have a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. All right, Resolution Four and Five are gen.
These are mine. Okay, so Resolution Four, which is the School Bus Stop Armed Surveillance Act and Enforcement Penalties, we talked about this one last year, it's pretty much the same. The resolution proposes the implementation of digital video detections, violation detection systems. So if a bus is stopped, the stop sign's out, and cars pass by, speed by, I think there was one school district, I think it was Peabody, where they had done a pilot, where they had a camera on a little thing, the wand thing that sticks out to track people who were passing buses that were stopped. Obviously, the benefits are it deters motorists from illegally passing and stop school buses, and then just the challenges that they had mentioned was the implementation cost of it, because it would be the responsibility of the the community, that's the town, to pay for the the cost of the.
Schools.
Schools.
Do you have any complaints from Patrick or anybody else?
On my street alone, it's rampant.
I was going to say.
You should see Whiting Street.
Wow.
High Street, too.
That surprises me. It's awful.
Yeah.
I used to see, when I was on the bus, I was on, like, Loud Street, and we'd always see, like, cars, like, zooming right by, and sometimes they get chased by cops, like, right next to the bus, and it was kind of wild to see. In my car, I have a dash cam, and I think, like, the value of that is completely warranted, especially even if you get in an accident of some sort, like, especially as a kid, that, like, can save you a lot of trouble from the back end. That's something to think about.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah. Okay. Especially where they're on those roads with the house to shoulder, you see it happen. Often, as I have in town.
Yeah.
We voted in favor for it last year.
Yeah. It's very controversial, I think.
With dollars.
Yeah.
It's a bubble splat. So it only it only encourages legislation to pass a law to allow us to do it, it's not directing, we don't have to do it.
Yes.
No, I'm just saying they should make sure that dollars that are attached to it as well.
Yes. That is a very good point.
That was the cons, that was.
All right. Somebody want to make a motion?
Yep. I will make a motion to support Resolution Four, School Bus Stop Armed Surveillance Act and Enforcement Penalties, as proposed by MIC Board Directors.
I have a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay. Number five, salt of mine, it is aligning tax authority with the required local contributions. So this is our favorite topic.
Telling the state to pay more.
Proposition, this is, I think it's Ness's favorite topic, too, Proposition Two and a half.
Do you have any charts that go along with this?
No, I do not. If I had remembered my homework less than an hour before it was due, I might have been able to refer something.
She sounded like you were.
So this just under the current framework, the requirement that local contribution is determined by the tax levy, which cannot be increased more than two and a half percent. And then this resolution calls on Massachusetts legislators to enact a law that would permit municipalities to increase the levy limit by the amount that require local contributions that exceeds the two and a half percent threshold. Just some benefits, obviously, I think we all know the benefits, by allowing municipalities to raise it, gives additional revenue to meet local contributions. And then just some of the challenges that they had highlighted was it may lead to higher property taxes, maybe some resistance from government, and just the some, it's different capacity from each municipality as to what they can handle.
This is where the CAM money would come.
Part of the discussion with this is they it was, they really put this in here as a tool to, so that when they, the lobbyists for MASC are at the State House, they can highlight the funding issues with school fundings. They kind of said, like, they can't see us, like, say, say this all went according to this this language, and, like, like, school committees in towns wouldn't be raising their tax tax levies to five percent, like, that would never go, but it's it's helpful for them, is to try to get attention, so that was kind of the.
And just to remind that the Proposition Two and a Half was, went into effect in 1980.
Right, yeah. And we've all seen the difficulties with that, so.
And so many districts, too, are, like, in the next few years, looking at either overrides or even reductions in staff, even across the South Shore, particularly where it's so difficult to pass overrides, and there have been so many failures as well across the South Shore.
Yeah, we saw that last year with Loud Street.
Everybody is on that fiscal cliff now, because they received the ESTRA funds and having to navigate through that. We had done the override at the right time, but it's it's challenging, and I'm I am personally afraid for public education going forward, because if we continue to have these constraints, people will continue to move their kids out of district here in Hingham, because they can afford to send their kids to public, the private schools, and we'll see public schools decimated. You know, it makes me nervous.
There is a crisis coming.
Yeah, it's coming.
Okay.
I'm a strong supporter.
I am, too. Okay. I will make a motion to support Resolution Five, aligning tax authority with the required local contributions, as proposed by the MIC, MASC Board Directors.
I have a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, so Resolution Six and Seven are met.
Yep. Resolution Six is support of legislation to improve the fiscal health of rural school districts. You know, a lot of stats in here highlighting the significant challenges that rural school districts have. And this effectively, if we were to support this, it would be us having to urge the legislature to pass comprehensive legislation encompassing all recommendations from the Legislative Commission on the fiscal health of rural schools, report a sustainable future for rural schools, which would, you know, kind of have things such as rural school aid grant program, establishment, including a law on defining student enrollment factor within the foundation budget, variety of different factors. Make sense to me?
Any questions? Yeah. Okay. Do we want to make a motion?
Yes.
I will make a motion to support Resolution Six, support of legislation to improve the fiscal health of rural school districts, as proposed by the MASC Board Directors.
I have a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay.
Resolution Seven is fully adjusting Chapter Seventy Eight for inflation. So basically, the resolution would be that Mass would call on, again, the Massachusetts Legislature to advance legislation mandating inflation index catch-ups to Chapter Seventy Foundation Aid, fully accounts for realized inflation that has occurred since the passage of the Student Opportunity Act, and that Mass will work with Massachusetts Legislature to ensure in future years where realized inflation is above the 4.5% annual inflation cap in subsequent years, catch-ups are made in Chapter Seventy Eight, and realized inflation is used in formulas to calculate Chapter Seventy Eight in perpetuity.
Makes sense? All right.
I will make a motion to support Resolution Seven, which is fully adjusting Chapter Seventy Eight Aid for inflation, as proposed by the MASC Board Directors.
I have a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, so Resolution Eight is Carrie.
So this one is equitable funding for non-regional school districts with high transportation costs. It was put forward by the Plymouth School Committee, which I guess is one of the largest non-regional school districts in the state. And so there's some districts, because of their size or for other reasons, have high transportation costs, and unlike regional schools districts, they don't receive funding from the state. So they, what it does is it calls on the state to recognize the financial challenges of the transportation costs with the longer, the non-regional districts with longer routes. It calls on the state to acknowledge that non-regional school districts should have access to financial support, similar to what regional districts get when costs are extraordinary. And it would create an extraordinary roots relief fund, which is sort of like the circuit breaker thing, so it would, a group would come together and decide what the what the threshold would be, and if the transportation costs, for example, were like 125% of that, they'd reimburse a portion of it. So it would work like the circuit breaker. So, yeah, it seems like, I guess, the only, the burden on the districts would be to apply for the grants, and then there would be an annual reporting requirement as well, if this were to go forward.
Makes sense.
Yeah. I don't know if that this would impact us at all.
Because it's regional.
Well, it's not, it's non-regional.
There was something similar to last year, which I think this is an amended version of, if I remember correctly.
Oh, maybe.
I don't remember how we.
I think last year was regional.
Yes.
Yeah.
And there's nothing in the, in those of the MASC laws that they like to pass about increase in circuit breaker funding?
I think that's already part of the platform.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I think that that would even take a higher precedent.
That'd be more help. So what do we think about this one?
Support of.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, I will make a motion to support resolution eight, equitable funding for non-regional school districts with high transportation costs as proposed by the MASC board directors.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, so then nine and ten are Allie.
Nine and ten are both related to vocational and technical schools. And resolution nine is basically just saying that MASC would like the legislature and the MSBA to create a tiered system for reimbursement because vocational and technical schools, when they're doing the build-outs, are a lot more expensive than a traditional high school or elementary school program. So they're just looking to encourage more of a layered system for those schools so they can get a higher rate of reimbursement.
With this one, there's likely to be an amendment because somebody brought up the point of what about regular high schools that have VOTAC programs and they might need more funding for that too. So I think somebody is probably going to bring that, so.
Yeah, which is a good point.
Yeah. I'm thinking of us with traces, you know?
Yeah, so my thought would be maybe we support it with the proposed amendment if that comes up.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I will make a motion to support resolution. Take that out, as proposed by the MASC board directors.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And then resolution ten kind of goes hand in hand with this. It just is focused on the number of chapter seventy-four schools currently, which there are ninety-two schools that have a chapter seventy-four program. But unfortunately, many students don't have access to actually getting into those programs. Either their school district is not a member or they just have very high numbers of applications and not enough positions. So this is really encouraging the governor and the legislature to support the expansion of capacity at these schools. So it doesn't have a lot of specifics about how they would actually do that. But, but supporting, you know, finding more slots for students across the state because this is, you know, as we've seen even in Hingham, an option that many people are looking to. And then additionally, that they're calling upon the legislature to create a special commission to talk about the MSBA and the prior resolution and how they would fund this, or how they would fund building those schools out for more capacity.
I'm supportive, yeah.
I will make a motion to support resolution ten, expansion in capacity in chapter seventy-four vocational technical programs as proposed by the MASC board directors.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, all right, so then the expiring resolutions, I took this on, I'll try and go through them quickly. So in 2023, the delegate assembly approved an amendment to the bylaws that resolutions will expire three years after their adoption and they can be reconsidered and re-adopted. So there are a number of them that are going to be proposed. I went through and kind of figured out when we had approved it, which meeting we did. So at our November fourteenth, twenty nineteen meeting, we did approve all of these. So I thought I would bring them all up again. Banning polies during from schools, so it's basically the foam cups, bowls, plates, and trays from public schools and it urges the ban of them. And we had voted yes, so I would propose that we continue that proposal.
Do we do, do we put on this?
I think so.
We've done this before?
They said they're going to put them forward as a slate and, and so, like, it's already part of the MASC platform, so they, they do it. They all, most of them were contentious when they went forward. We might, we might want to just, are there any other people that we want to expire?
Yeah, do you want me to go through each one quickly and then, because we voted yes on all of these?
Right, yeah.
All right, so I'll go through them quickly. All right, so the second one pertaining to educator diversity and professional licensure. There's difficulty in attracting diverse teaching staff. Part A calls for the elimination of the MTEL and the Massachusetts Performance Assessment of Leaders, which is the MAPPA, as licensing requirements for educators. And part B calls for the governance and licensure of professional educators to be vested in a board comprised of licensed educators. Again, we voted yes. The next one is full funding of transportation costs for students in foster care and state care. The state should reimburse transportation funding for children in foster care and state care. It also calls for the Massachusetts General Court to properly calculate and assume full expense of providing educational services to students in foster care and state care. The next one is. Second.
I was shocked that that doesn't exist already.
I know, I'm shocked too.
It's not, it actually, it depends on which, where does it, where the students reside, where the foster home is in some cases, and the districts who were in that particular area where they reside have to pay the transportation to and from school most of the time. So it's not something that is reimbursed at all.
Okay. Sorry.
No, it's all right. Poverty and Children, it was readoption in 2019. It was originally adopted in 2015. It's to support legislation eradicating poverty among children in Massachusetts and advocate for social and economic justice for students and their families. The next one is access to menstrual supplies. Work with the state and federal legislators to provide additional funding to provide free access to menstrual products from the nurse and restrooms and locker rooms. And the next one is charter school reform. This, seek the legislative, legislative action to report accurate numbers of students who leave charter schools and return to the district responsible for students. Require DESI to retain and report accurate data on enrollment of students with disabilities or economically disadvantaged and status as racial and linguistic minorities. And require that all charter schools be funded in full by the Commonwealth rather than an expropriation of chapter seventy from the sending districts. The last one at that meeting was climate change. It calls on Congress to take action on climate change and advocate for infrastructure needs and emergency funding for disaster relief caused by natural catastrophes. There's one that we approved that's coming up for reconsideration. It was, it was approved at our October nineteenth, 2020 meeting. It's school committee anti-racism. It's a guarantee that racist practice are eradicated and diversity, equity, and inclusion is embedded in, and practiced for students, families, faculty, and staff by ensuring districts create a welcoming community for all students. Annual professional development on diversity, equity, inclusion, examining policies for institutional and systematic racialization practices and incorporate history of racial oppression and works by Black authors and works from diverse perspectives into a district's curriculum. The last three were approved at our October eighteenth, 2021 meeting. Mandatory recess, calls for at least twenty minutes of uninterrupted free play recess at each, each day. The next one is prohibiting the use of Native American mascots. Calls for regulations prohibiting public schools from using any names that refer to, represents, or is associated with Native Americans, including aspects of Native American cultures and specific tribes. And then the last one is full funding for Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Reintroduce and promote passage to fully fund costs to educate students with.
That might be particularly useful for Hingham.
Yes. Katie's already on that, I think. She's got, it's not part of the plan, it's coming. Okay, so is everybody good with all those, re-adopting? All right, you want to just make a?
Make a mega motion.
Of all of them?
Yeah.
Because it's going to come in as a slate, as Carrie said, so.
Yeah, yeah, just say all the expiring.
Yeah.
Just read the text of all of them.
I will make a motion to support all the expiring resolutions as proposed by the MASC board directors.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're done. All right, so seven point four, to discuss KIA nurses rate and act as appropriate. Asia?
Yes.
I think you've got the next three, right? Okay, thank you.
So basically, what we, we actually increased the rate to thirty-six point zero five last year for the nurses. And what we're proposing here is to, and put in place two steps. Once, the first step remained keeping it at thirty-six point zero five and the second step at thirty-seven point one three for the nurses. The nurses basically help any kids that attend both the program and sometimes a pre-K program as well in terms of any medically fragile kids or kids that need assistance in any way.
Any questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion to increase the rate for nurses in the Kids in Action program who have two or more years' experience in the program to thirty-seven thirteen for the school year, September first, 2024, to June thirtieth, 2025, and to pay any nurses who worked in the program prior to October twenty-first, 2024, or by two act of pay adjustment.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. Seven point five to approve grants and donations and act as appropriate, I think we have two.
Yes, we have one. I wanted to thank Andy Hoy from the Social Studies Department for writing a DESI civics teaching and learning grant. DESI awarded us twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars to support civics education across our schools. So the funds will be used to fund our now beloved tradition of grade-three mocktown meeting, which has really been a terrific addition to our civics curriculum. It will also fund a robust partnership with Generation Citizen, which will provide some professional development and also some curriculum. And then finally, it will help fund our mock presidential election and civics project showcase. So again, thank you to Andy for his work in crafting that grant stream.
I will make a motion to accept the DESI civics teaching and learning grant in the amount.
For all of their terrific work. Plymouth River has submitted a grant memo totaling the contributions of the Plymouth River School, PTO, and they have given a total of fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to support enrichment, to support work with teachers this year, to work with everything from our Holly Hill environmental program to funding fifth-grade activities. And so again, just wanted to acknowledge the work of the PTO and very grateful for this very generous gift to our schools.
Amazing, thank you, the PTO, for their valuable work.
The tradition continues. The tradition continues.
The tradition, exactly.
All right.
I will make a motion to accept the PRS's PTO grant in total contributions of fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, PRS.
Yes, thank you so much.
All right, seven point six, to approve surplus and act as appropriate.
The Hingham High School library, librarian is reading through just to make sure that she removes any books that are in poor condition. And she provided a list of those books for us to decommission as well.
Okay. Any questions?
Okay. I will make a motion to declare a surplus library books from the Hingham High School library listed and to authorize the high school librarian to dispose of them at the least cost to Hingham.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item eight, subcommittee and project reports. Matt?
Yep, so CPAC had their kickoff meeting last Wednesday, August sixteenth. Katie was there and Dr. Cataldo also was there. Good kickoff for them. We had the East Council meeting earlier this afternoon where we talked about professional development, Wellness Wednesdays, and the budget. And then Hef had a meeting last week. The spelling bee is coming up next, or not next, this coming Sunday, so very exciting. And we also had, gave an update on thriving, is it thriving classrooms? Did I have the wrong term?
Building thinking classrooms.
Building thinking classrooms. I wrote thinking. It's a great update.
Also thriving, thinking and thriving.
But they were excited, they had seen it, a couple of the board members have seen it in action during open houses and were really thrilled about that. And I think they'd love to have a discussion here at the, at the sort of, I mentioned this to Katie, just to give an update, or have Katie and team give an update on that. And they're really excited about building momentum around that.
Great.
The only thing I have is next Monday will be a meeting of the Human Rights Commission. That will be a Zoom-only meeting, so check the Agenda Center for the Zoom links and everything for anyone who wants to jump in.
Thanks.
Salary negotiations met with the Food Services Association last Friday and I'm pleased to announce that we reached a tentative agreement on a one-year contract. So I just thank them for all of their work. It was really collaborative and an excellent discussion, so. And I'll fill you on the details in executive session.
Okay, great. And that was what, two meetings?
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Yeah, that was great. I mean, they were really, they were really great to work with, so. Oh, and also the Middle School Council met last Tuesday.
The only thing, Building Committee is meeting this Wednesday night. And then Slater reached out about scheduling a student advisory council and school committee meeting next Tuesday at six-thirty PM virtually. I cannot be there because I'm traveling.
I cannot be there either.
All right. How many people can and want to go because we might have to post it if, or do we just want to have a couple, two or three people go? So then it's not posted, which can be a little awkward sometimes for.
I cannot.
Okay, so a bunch of people can't. I can if, yes, you could. Jen, you could, no, right, so. No, that's okay, I think it's.
Yeah, I can't either.
You can't?
No.
So you cannot.
I cannot.
Six-thirty next Wednesday. All right, you can not. I can, you could.
I can.
Jen, you cannot.
And I can't.
All right. All right, I'll reach out to him, I'll reach out to him and try to schedule another one. Okay, Allie? Sorry, I'm thinking about that. Do we want, on these meetings, because they are sort of tough to schedule, I think between their schedules and our schedules, do we want to just have it be two or three people go to them?
I think so.
All right, and then, okay, perfect, okay. Or one next week.
I'll go next. All right. Plymouth River School Council is meeting tomorrow. And in case you didn't hear about it already, the Arts Walk was really great. There was a ton of students performing from drama to chorus to band to a bunch of other different displays. The art club was sound, they were making sand art. So there was a lot of people moving around, it was a gorgeous day, so they had a great turnout.
Awesome, thank you. Self-school, School Council, it's always a tongue twister. They had our meeting today. And then the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee is meeting this Friday at eight-thirty AM. We're just gonna, we're gonna get a update on the FY twenty-five quarter one and then we're going to discuss roofs, buses, and facilities.
Exciting stuff.
I just have one update. Foster School Council met on October ninth. We might have been able to put some hard hats on and maybe walk around the school somewhat, but that's not. No, I won't go into any more detail, but it's amazing. I'm so excited. And that's it. So we have, our next two meetings are November fourth at six-thirty and Monday, November eighteenth at six-thirty. We had talked about doing, going to Metco, they cannot, they don't have the time for us to go there like we did last year. But we had come up with an idea of, Katie had come up with a great idea to do it at the Camilla Roundtree Library once that opens in Foster, so she would invite Metco corporate to come here and we'd host them.
It was just Cheryl's idea.
Good idea, all right, good.
They were still providing all the food, right?
Yeah, right, yes.
Their food is amazing. I'll go in and pick it up.
Yep, yep. They came up with an idea because we wanted to promote the dedication of the Camilla Roundtree Library. So, and Millie wanted to come out for that and then we were going to do a little press release, the whole thing. And then we're like, all right, why don't we just have the meeting there actually, if we're going to do it, so.
It's a great idea.
Yeah. Yeah, and we started a trend because Sharon is also doing the same. They are naming one of their libraries for their original Metco director too.
Amazing, good.
Copycats.
It's for good cause. We're trendsetters.
All right, with that, anything under forty-eight hours? Nope, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
To executive session.
To executive session, yes.
I'm making a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to. I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session, pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One. A three for the purposes of to approve minutes from the executive session held on October seventh, 2024, as an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares.
And so declares.
And to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation and act as appropriate, if, no, sorry, I was making it wrong. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares.
And so declares. All right, we're adjourned to executive session. Thank you.
We can vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh my gosh, yeah, yeah. I was just trying to put this through.
We also need a second.
Yes, we do need a second.
Take the gavel.
I retake that back, sorry. Thank you. All right, Matt, Tim, Carrie, Michelle.
Aye.
Allie.
Aye.
Jen, and I'm an aye as well. All right, now the gavel goes.